Good afternoon. This is everybody here at this time we call our history kind of planning commission wet session to order. May eighth, twenty twenty five. The time to meet the order. Night we have a, I see I got a, okay. We're having a guest speaker but representative available question. New business that we're gonna have here. That happens David Dobbin's. Is he representing, okay, is he in a representative for J T T A?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I get it. Old business, no old business, right? So we're going to new business, I put business in hand and be a review of proposal man development by David Dobbin for a roadside fruit and vegetable stand. Place along Town Road off the departure ID. Zero eight two double out, double out, one fifteen triple out. You'll give us a review for the staff.
Yes, sir, as you can see in your memorandum, uh, he is actually going to in the RD district. Attempt to or that is proposed to do a roadside stand. He is in conjunction with the South Carolina Department of Agriculture, uh, with their rules and regulations. So if you'll turn in your memorandum. It has the placement of the buildings. He's planning on having the stand as well as a restroom facility. It shows you your setbacks and the examples of the building that he is going to use for the actual fruit stand. The signage, I think it had said that in the South Carolina Department of Agriculture, they kind of dictate the signage that you would use, um, is which is what I read in the letter. So if y'all have any questions for him, uh, you can ask him. Uh, all applicable setbacks are, you know, twenty-five in the front, fifty in the back, fifty on the sides. And the overlay would not apply as, because it doesn't reach Towns Road.
Mr. Dobbin, is he right?
Yes, sir.
You will come up, please state your name and kind of give us an overview of what you, you have an overview of your slide.
I noticed the agenda said Dobson. My name is Dobbin's.
Dobbin.
D O B B I N S.
I think that's right, okay.
But I take Dobson as a compliment related to James.
Uh, I see you, uh, are you, you a farmer, you just, that's your sideline, or you a?
My wife and I are responsible for about a hundred and forty acres of what was known as Mackey's Dairy. Eight hundred and seventy acres down there in the lower part of the county. She's born a Mackey. And I married in, I was told for years I was a guest down there. But, uh, we're responsible now for about a hundred and forty acres of that. And, uh, yeah, some form, uh, doing my best at it. And, uh, that's what this is about. Providing a source of income to support the continuation.
So while you go, so you, other way you get on that, uh, state agriculture program for roadside stand, certify.
The, um.
Program that, you know.
South Carolina Department of Agriculture has the, um, South, uh, produced in the South or whatever it's called. Certification and it sits a higher bar, uh, standard for, uh, the look and the feel of the stand. And we want to meet that requirement, uh, if not exceed it. Uh, so that, that's one of our goals. We'd like to be, being one of the first stopoff points in the county coming up this way. We want to be a showcase down there. Uh, I think the dairy always has been and, uh, we want to maintain that standard.
Okay, uh, question number two, I'm just, I'm just, you know. Uh, you plan, uh, how much, uh, are you, do you plan to grow, self-grow any of this yourself? Are you going to come from the farmer market or you come from individuals?
I'm, I'm sure I have a hearing disability from being deployed too many times. But I'm sorry, I asked the question.
Okay, I said, do, are you gonna do any personal growing of some of those vegetables? Uh, you plan to get them from the farmer market or you are individuals that have available with your?
Vote.
Your vote.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's what I, you're not keeping out of.
No, we definitely, we, we have to produce, the land has to work.
Right.
Um, ever, ever, we have eight children and fourteen grandchildren. They all understand if you're gonna be around, you've got to work and you've got land, it's got to work. And that's, that's what this is about.
Yeah, I kind of keep up with, uh, more model than fan, I keep up from, I've been a member of that for years. I can't keep up with the form. That's all I have at the moment, anybody else have any questions on like that?
I need to read, uh, a statement regarding this item by Commissioner Walsh. She's unable to be here tonight.
Yes, ma'am, right.
Okay, regarding the fruit stand on Towns Road, if the proposal meets or will be amended to the county ordinance conditional requirements for roadside produce stands, my vote would be to be in favor of the, of approval. I would like for Mr. Dobbin's to be informed of signage ordinance ordinances on Martin Town Road. Uh, I believe signage on Martin Town Road would be necessary to attract and inform travelers of the businesses and location. That's, those are her statements.
Yeah, not again.
And of course, it, he would be, you know, if he decides to place any signage, like I said earlier, he, it's out right outside of the overlay district, so those wouldn't apply. So he would just go by county.
Cause that certification is tiny, not that large. You know, that state, you seen the sign that the state required you to have for the act, Department of Agriculture.
The, uh, South Carolina certified.
It's not a real, I don't know the exact size of, but I'm familiar with it, right?
Yeah, it, it's normally posted like it, uh, Cook's, uh, roadside stand, um, at the counter and out front. And, and that certainly is the certification we want.
Yeah.
And promote, that's standard. So, yeah, that's the intent. We don't have frontage on Martin Town Road, although part of the family does. Cross that bridge when it comes to it. But our frontage is on Towns Road.
No?
No.
Yeah, that's right. Too good we have, when it comes to meeting for voting then.
That's all you need for now? Is that, is that all you need for now?
Yes, for now, right, and we, you know, our regular meeting at six when we vote. At the next meeting at six o'clock when we do the voting on it. Right now, just that's the information.
Okay, you have a question? Oh, well, um, we, we're kind of planning a grand opening next spring.
Right, yes.
And hope y'all come down and enjoy some fresh produce.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. All right, next, next we have, uh, let's see, review of J T A proposal for a major subdivision consisting of eight lots along Hummingbird Drive and Trent. Project ID number one forty-four, double out zero seven, double out three, triple out. Be, be on that for the staff.
As you can see in the memorandum, it's a ten point zero three acre parcel located, located off of Hummingbird. Hummingbird is a, uh, county maintained dirt road. Um, the lar, the smallest lot will be an acre with the largest lot being one point five nine acres. Um, he will be required to have lots as small as one acre to run county water. Per our ordinances that says that if county water and sewer are not available, it's two and a half acres. With county water available, it would be one. Also, being that the county water will be available along that road, he will have to provide hydrants every five hundred feet. So those are the requirements of that water and sewer, I mean, the water running down to those homes. And as you can see, the, also in the memorandum, the minimum price points for each.
Right, right, I see you, I see you.
Each home that he's proposing.
Is he tied, uh, this off of Bright, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, sir, will you come up and state your name and?
Yes, sir, Cliff Russell, and it's, uh, Jada, Jada Industries. It was a, you know, a good idea at the time, but I'll spend the rest of my life explaining it, so. You just took my brother away, by the way, April. You don't say anything about fire hydrants. That's gonna take a six inch water line. Other things always cost more than they should.
In that life.
Yes, sir.
You're a man, somebody, and then I'm in debt in my life, trying to always do what it started.
Oh, goodness.
So your plans, your plans worked here. That kind of circle in there, right? That's a dead road in down there, right?
It is, I like to think of a sandy road.
Sandy, I know it's sandy.
A promotion. It's a pretty flat piece of property. Really conducive to, some pretty easy construction there. Good part of the county.
So on these lots, um, they're gonna have their own septic tank or?
They will be on septic system. Yes, there's, there's no septic available.
So they gonna have, make sure I understand. You gonna use county water, but you gonna, each house gonna have their own septic tank.
Right, yeah, that's what April was saying. We didn't have municipal water, they had to be two and a half acre lots. I wish at that point I would not have bought the property.
So you ask, so, so that kind of put you at the point where you want to spend the money to put in the water system or cut out on the lot side, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a tight little deal. I mean, like, we're still waiting on DHEC approval. If, if they don't, uh, give me a retaining, retention pond, like variance or, on what you want to call it, but it doesn't, it doesn't justify putting in, um, big storm pipes and ponds and stuff for eight, eight lots, so. Fingers crossed there won't be other exciting surprises.
What, um, I don't know, um, what sideline they have on the, that president on Bright, right? They got a six inch line out there?
I don't know.
A lot of them they got two inches, someone, I don't know where they got that now.
Yeah, we, we got the, uh, permission to serve from the water department. But again, at that time, they did not bring up fire hydrants, so.
See, that's, that's the, that's the canyon ordinance under, with what the fire department is and all, you know, for everything that's a day.
Gotcha. I really don't know what happens if that is the case. I mean, if there's a two inch water line sitting there, that won't service a fire hydrant.
Definitely.
So, like, I don't, that's news to me.
Like I say, you probably want to consider what, you know, what you bet. If you want to take a shot on it and cut down on the, you know, make lots aside to meet the compliance, right? Be, be two and a half inches.
Right, if there, if the absence of county.
Lot would have to be two and a half acres.
Water and sewers, two and a half.
But I think we have to utilize.
You do.
Municipal water that's available.
One acre.
Oh, okay.
You have to provide county water in order to get the lots down to one acre. And because there's, you created the scenario where there is county water available because of the one acre lots, then the ordinance that requires fire hydrants applies.
And I'd make the argument that if they're gonna require fire hydrants, then there has to be other fire hydrants in the area. If there's other fire hydrants in the area, there should be sufficient water to supply. I mean, I, I would not think that they would just say, okay, out of nowhere, we have to start creating fire hydrants where there were no other fire hydrants and then not having the sufficient supply to, you know, sustain it, so. It might be the chicken and the egg, I don't know, but this is the.
Those are just questions that, you know, we'd have to get with the H for County Water and Sewer Authority. And see where they're at with it and what they have available, where you can tap in at and what that looks like with them.
Cause I don't think there's no fire hydrant down there.
I haven't seen any.
No, cause those are.
It's pretty rural.
Those are single, uh, residential houses back in there.
Right, it's, it's, it's been back there a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I haven't seen any, but.
I don't think they even have one at the church, cause, um, Science Hill, Science Hill Church is down there too. I don't think they have a fire hydrant at their church.
It'll be interesting to see what comes of that.
Cause see, basically with the, the line that was installed beforehand.
Right.
Right before then, but when you got new order to come along, you gotta do, you know, work it out some way. Cause basically, I did, I did some myself to business in other county, but I put in like, we put in hydrants. We had to put those system in ourselves. And then they tie into where, you know, sometimes it's the kind of what make preparation to get it to the point that we, get where we approved D H didn't go that way. We had, I installed water lines and sewer, I had to install those myself, no paper to the contractor.
Right.
Get it done, basically that's where it worked because.
And I'm sure there's plenty of water out on twenty-five, I mean, they could.
So if that be the cage you private could, I don't know how far the distance is from where that large lines are to get to where you would be responsible installing.
Right.
Look into that.
It's just kind of a, like I said, chicken and egg, it's like, kind of hard telling, you've got to put in fire hydrants when there's not enough water to put in fire hydrants. We shall see.
I have another question, I mean, we'll go back and see what, whatever, me and you, you know. Think, think a little deep in it and see what, you know, what route you want to pursue.
I mean, I've spent a lot of money on this already, yeah, we're already through engineering and, and, you know, we're submitted to DHEC. I'm, I'm, I'm waiting on approval anytime now. Again, I mean, you can sort of see the, the obvious conflict. I mean, if, if, if the water's available, then by all means, we'll put in the fire hydrants. But it'd be kind of silly to say, set fire hydrants out there with not enough water to supply them. That just seems like nonsense.
That what I, you know, I reckon, I mean, I did that, you know. Go back out to water department and then whatever, do some, go home with this and then make a decision of what you want to do with both.
Well, no, I want to, what I want to do.
I know what you want to do, right? But when you wait calls, you got eight lots now. You got eight lots now.
Right.
But, uh, you know, to satisfy that ordinance, to comply with it would be what? Cutting out a lot there would do that with it.
What, to not?
The block side to put fire hydrants on.
To remove that requirement?
That's right.
And remove the county wa, you'd have to not run the county water.
Not running.
And it would be required two and a half acres instead of one.
If county water. If county water's available, is it required he taps into it? Even at, even at two and a half acres?
No, if ca, if, if he's gonna go with two and a half acres, then he's not required to even run the water line. And so it says, if where county water is available for residential development, you shall install fire hydrants every five hundred feet.
But I mean, before I got pushed into a major subdivision, and again, this is not, y'all, I guess as far as planning goes, I guess we're just trying to flush out whether, you know, like, as long as we're in compliance with that, but that should have brought, been brought up a long time ago before I got pushed into a major subdivision, only to find out they don't have water to, to serve it, you know what I mean? I keep looking at you, I'm not looking, I'm just saying like, since.
I mean, have you, have you spoken with them about their water line? Do you know that they don't have that adequate water line, so?
Yeah, I know, we're, we're making assumptions. I mean, I don't know if you ever been out there before, but it's pretty rural. It's very hard to imagine that it's a six inch water line.
And then it might be a six inch line today, you know, I don't know.
And we might not land on the moon.
I don't remember when that line, you have any idea? You have an idea, but I don't, I don't remember when that line was put, how long it been in there, see something like that. Cause see, they updated it a long, they changed it, cause it was a time when it was smaller secret. They didn't really operate like they're supposed to.
Right.
Go up, you know, upgrade that, supply the system.
So, but as far as like, uh, planning goes, I guess, uh, we're, we're not in violation of any concerns as far as the subdivision of the property?
Everything's some.
In that, in the plant.
As, as far as grading and sweeps and your, you know, retention detention ponds or whatever, you're gonna have to do that, well.
Right.
Those, or you will get permission from the authority having jurisdiction over those items. And once you get approval from them, you just turn it into us, we've done our due diligence and you just keep moving forward as you get all that in.
So I'm going to cover the elephant in the room. I, it's just something that you need to know about. So they, the people that sold the property to Ricky, who I bought it from Ricky Miller, they were never granted an easement back there. I don't even really know how they ever got it recorded, you know, to, to sell. But that house has access to a road, a county road, but it's not well maintained. But it's not my responsibility to grant these people easement, cause it'll destroy my subdivision because I can't service more than two lots. But I can go and tell you right now, it's probably gonna come up. And I want to understand that I'm not in violation, I've not done anything wrong. We, we, as far as that, I don't know if y'all had the proposed plat? But I have, uh, I have made a, an easement on the backside of lot seven or eight that grants that house access to that road back there. But I got a pretty good feeling it's gonna come up, so let's go ahead and tackle it. Right, so that if you're looking at, it's gonna be the lot, uh, if you're looking at from Hummingbird, it's gonna be the, the back lot on the right. And I've granted an easement for them to have access to the, uh, county maintained road, but it's not maintained. But it is a county road and they should have access to it. But I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm sure it's gonna come up, but I've not done anything wrong.
Yeah, no, they definitely gonna have to have an easement.
They, they gotta have access to, you know, that's right, uh. But it's not my fault that they, they sold that property without an easement to Hummingbird. But I am required to give them an easement to, you know, to a road. And so I, that's on the proposed, uh, plat. And I don't know, I don't even know if anybody's living in it, it looks really dilapidated, but, you know. There is a, there's clue, somebody's been driving down through my property, using that as access to that house. I don't know how often they go there, but I've not done anything wrong.
And that's a, all with the crack of a key. That problem, lot, once, uh.
And the only other variation to the proposed plat, I don't know if you spoke to your engineer about switching the driveway from Hummingbird to that easement to the side, or I guess it's lot five.
Right.
Because of the dimensions, the required, uh, one to five ratio, the hundred feet along its roadway.
Right.
And just switching that driveway.
Oh, I think we did talk about that, yep, cool.
That would, that would be the only thing that would be, and we'll notate it whenever we write all this up and, and the final stuff that he'll, you know, he'll just get the engineer to.
Yeah, we probably would have the, the plat, you know, modified.
I looked, and when I looked somewhere, I don't have no right, you know, easement back in there, I couldn't see. You were just looking at this, not looking at the house.
Yeah, there's, there's an easement that serves those back two lots, I think that's seven and eight. But like I said, it, you can only service two lots with that easement and I, I gave them another easement. Essentially it's landlot right now, which is, thinks it fell through the cracks, but this one definitely fell through the cracks. They shouldn't have been able to sell that property without it.
Well, and I, I, you know, past stuff, that's skipped through a lot, a lot of time, you know, get through it, but that's a bit definitely happened in the most.
Yeah, it's an old.
Also, one legal, that, you know, you couldn't block them off from going there.
Right.
That, you know.
Right, yeah.
If you went to court with it, you know, you gotta have, I've, I've been involved in the other county, they got one in, we kind of fought that thing about two year, but people, and they won't, cause they been going in there before, the land was over.
Right, yeah. I, I definitely, like I said, I, I'm aware of it and we made provisions for them, but they may or may not like it. They probably won't like it.
As long as they got a.
A way out.
And plot it now to it, you know, that it documented.
Yes, sir.
For that, uh.
All right. Thank you, guys. What, what is six of positive?
I do have one more statement, well, another statement from Ms. Walsh.
Okay.
Uh, she wrote in and asked us to read her comments on this item. Uh, regarding the major subdivision application and proposal on Hummingbird Lane, I would vote for a conditional approval requiring that the subdivision acquire water sewer, which that's, it has to. He's under, he went, did this on the understanding of they, in order to have one acre lots, he was, and he's aware of that. And conditional approval requiring the subdivision acquire water service and fire hydrant installation, which our ordinances already ready require all of that. If not, then the plat approval was, uh, with lots sizes at least two and a half acres, which he again, he again understand, he understood the, all of that going into it. And that was her comment.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, next we go back to, uh, review proposed condition useful fruit and vegetable and food and beverage stores and table one on kind of order, say twenty four thirty one, you want to review that, right? On your back page, on the back page.
Uh, next, what, what we're gonna do is, um.
I guess you just go.
I got too many papers trying to read out comments, everyone else give me just a second. Okay. Yeah, the, uh, review the post conditional uses. When we revamped the use table, we, you guys recommended allowing, uh, roadside stands. As conditional, well, the conditions need to be written. And looking at those, we can look at, and I've speaking with some of county council, um, on the issue. We don't want to hinder the small guy who brings a truck and wants to sell fruit or, or fruit or vegetables on the side of the road. So we could write an ordinance that pertains to permanent commercial fruit stands like Mr. Dobbin's. So those would, minimum lot size, you could do five acres, you could do two and a half acres. Because my thing is, you, if you get into a major sub, uh, subdivision and it's an RD and you've got houses all around, you know, would you want that in the middle of a major subdivision? Um, so that's where if you do two and a half to five acres, you, you're not gonna run into that problem. Possible buffer requirements, requirements on top of, of the type of structure like Mr. Dobbin's. You know, he, he illustrated it's gonna look, it's gonna be a, it's a nice structure and, you know, you can, uh, come up with some components of that, what you think that you would like to require if we're gonna allow that in as conditional in RD. Or any other place that y'all, y'all dictated that it was conditional, the roadside stands. So y'all have any ideas and we'll try to have that wrote up with everything else when we meet next in June. So.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, cause see, uh, Commissioner Weller, he encouraged those type of road stand for the state, you know, agriculture department, and they got help to have on, you know, you can look into it, I think you get the system. But I don't know if you're familiar with it, but Commissioner Weller, he the, uh, head of agriculture for South Carolina. They encouraged those type stands that you are talking, he wanted that kind of commission, you know, kind of planning commission ought to work to help, you know, set some standards for them that they're available.
I apologize, but I'm not following what's being discussed because I might bear it.
Um, yes, and like I said, whatever recommendations, if you can envision, especially it, RD is one, residential development is one of the condi, conditional use on our use table. So whatever suggestions you can think of, maybe signage, entryway, um, building type. Like I said, minimum acreage, cause you gotta think, we don't want to, any, it would just apply to something that was permanent, like with Mr. Dobbin's.
That typically, he a prominent, right?
So that would be our first thing, we, we, we would write the ordinance that would, or the condition that, um, for roadside fruit stands that are with permanent structures. And then you can just go from there on acreage requirements, because like I said, you might want to consider in RD, what does that look like? You know, if we're, if you got a vacant lot, lots not built out, they don't have, um, they don't have covenants or, uh, other restrictions on themselves, you know, you've got somebody setting up a, want to build a fruit, commercial fruit stand with a lot of traffic in a subdivision, so you could look at lot size to kind of have that veer away from that possibility. But what it, what the acreage looks like would be up to y'all.
See, so you got one thing about that, you want good parking space.
Yeah.
To get it out of the traffic.
Yes, sir.
Right.
They have that problem down here, jackets down here, we don't want that problem. Make sure people can get out.
So whatever you guys tell me, I will write up and you can look at it and say yea or nay next time, we'll put it in a packet.
I would say for land, um, size, two and a half up to a five.
So you're saying either two and a half or to five would be good for minimum lot size?
Yeah.
That gives plenty.
Like, um, enough, um, place to, uh, with a two and a half, they could do like a half acre or building, then the two acres for parking.
See, that gives enough to get.
Fruit stands aren't, you know, they're not, you know, even like Sarah's and Cook's and, uh.
But however, if you think about it, you know, if your stand does well, would there be like an expansion in time and. You know, would we have to consider the fact that, hey, you're doing really well and he wants to expand and make sure that the parking and the area would, you know.
They could always handle that.
Stand, but there'd have to be the minimum to start with. Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, if you're thinking, you know, again, what do you think, two and a half to five acres, you can also look at setback, additional setbacks.
Yeah, I think, I think the setback is important.
I think setbacks.
Yes.
Setbacks and buffer. Specific buffer requirements, because, like, you know, again, if you, you're in a residential apart, development zoning. And you got houses next door and you've got traffic coming in and out, you want that, that setback and those buffers, planted buffers.
I think it should be determined on the size of the fruit stand, I mean, it's called a roadside fruit stand. If it's a roadside, theoretically, it's most times are smaller, you got somebody growing a garden in their backyard, wanting to sell some of their produce.
So that's a good, I mean, that's another idea, you say minimal, maximum.
Determine off of building size.
Right, maximum square footage could be.
Determine on land size.
Right.
You can do that or ultimate maximum square footage, nothing, roadside stands cannot be over five hundred square feet, a thousand square feet, whatever you.
And would that be, i- if it's such, if it is somebody like just growing in their backyard, is that permanent or is that temporary? Would they even be subject to this?
That would be considered, uh.
Seasonal, though, that. You know, that might.
If it's their home, it's considered an accessory use, so, you know, this really wouldn't.
So if it's at their home, it would not apply?
It would be an accessory use. So this would be the sole purpose of it.
A specific lot just set for that.
Yes, sir, it's commercial, there's no, you know, it, it's.
It would be like a Cook's or a Sarah's.
Yes, yes.
Make sure we stipulate that, that.
Yeah.
It not go, develop into a store, but it just, you know.
Right, cause you wouldn't wanna hinder anybody, that's just somebody small growing stuff, cause, you know, the more the better.
So do you wanna start with?
You don't wanna make it so hard to discourage them.
If you have two and a half acres. I mean, would you want to go down to two and a half acres or would you wanna set it at five? And then we can go from there for the.
I think two and a half would be fine, depending on.
I think two and a half.
So do you wanna set?
Square footage of the building.
Square footage, yeah, so what kind of square footage for the building or a two and a half acre? You can go up to what? For two, if you have two and a half acres, and then you could have, if you have five acres or more, I mean, we can go in that direction.
Being at two and a half at five hundred square, that's a ten by fifty building, so I mean, that's, that's a good size of building, I should say.
Gotta take it again.
Yeah, it's real, that's about five hundred square foot, it's a big building.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, two and a half acres, max five hundred square feet?
Yeah, I'd say max.
How, how, what would you say the dimensions are on like Cook's?
Oh.
It wasn't that.
What would you think the dimensions would be on Cook's, I'm terrible at estimating dimensions.
It goes so far back, damn.
Oh, that?
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's, it's a deep, it's more than.
Pretty, it's long.
He got a long, that's a long, like, I'm gonna probably have passed it on.
You gotta think about, like Cook's, if you, you could say fifty foot long and then two, ten foot deep, that'd be five hundred squ- square foot. Cook's is probably closer, it's probably closer to a thousand square foot.
Yes, Sarah's the other one, it would be more.
Yeah.
It would be closer to the five hundred square feet.
Sarah's would be closer to five hundred.
The Cook's ones that's far back.
Yep. Sarah's over there would be closer to that five hundred.
That is plenty.
Yeah, Cook's would be, what, double?
Yeah, at least.
Probably, because how long is?
Twelve, thirteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
At least.
If you can't get five hundred fruits in a five hundred square foot building, you're in trouble.
And I understand, I mean, it's just like, it's Sarah's and Cook's, they, they go beyond that.
Yes.
They, they have people, local people bringing jans and jellies and sauces and all those things and, you know, if they wanna do that, but still, like you said, if you feel like five hundred square feet would be about like Sarah's. Then that would be plenty of room, for, especially for two and a half acres, now, do you wanna go beyond that? And say minimum, you do wanna stay with two and a half acre minimum requirement?
Yeah.
And if it's two and a half acres, the max would be five hundred square feet, but if you, do you wanna go beyond that? And say, if you have five acres or more, you can increase by. Somebody square feet, make the building larger, or do you wanna stick with what we got? You have to have a minimum of two and a half acres and five hundred square foot building.
I think that'd be fine, because if you go, you go over that, you're gonna have to have more acreage anyhow.
I gotta understand, on the agriculture program.
And it is looking at a roadside stand, what, what do you think of when you think of a roadside stand? It's not some massive market.
Like, cause there, I mean, open their growth space.
You're not talking about a country store, you're talking about a roadside.
In and out. Okay, so what about buffer requirements and, and setbacks? Do you, you, you wanna look at si- uh, type two, three? You want it to be bare, you know, minimum, or you, had it, what are you, what are you thinking on?
Your bu- if buffer, I think your buffer requirement, if you, if you're in the neighborhood down there. I think it should be a heavy buffer.
So a four or a five on the sides and the rear and a one in the front?
On the side, if you got.
One in the front looks like the Sweetwater Frito Lake is, you know, spaced out pretty good and you can see the storefront. But you still have some planted buffer there, but on the side, you could do a four or a five, which is a lot thicker. And you can do fifty foot setback on the sides and the rear, twenty-five in the front. So fifty front from the, fifty feet from the property line would be, you have to set the building back fifty feet at least on the sides and the rear. And we can, you know, when we, when we present it next month, we'll do, I'll show you an example of what all of this looks like and you can say, yeah, or no, we need more.
Yeah.
So what about signage control, do you wanna have any specific or just kinda, you know, no freestanding signs, and I'm just throwing stuff out there? Allow freestanding signs, uh, monument signs that are a certain size or just.
We do need to move it such on that.
I would definitely look at not, not any, um, lit signs, display signs as far as blinking advertisement signs, uh, just. You can, you know, look at the square foot of a, max square foot of sign.
I think it should only have one permanent sign and then the rest just be temporary, like most roadside.
I'm thinking I get it to it with.
Dig them in when, when they're, when they're selling. And then pull them up when they're, they're not there.
I was thinking I contact Commissioner Weathers, I hope he can catch up with me and see what they recommend department, you know. State, on the agriculture, see if they really do it, what they recommend.
Y'all have anything, any other thoughts on that topic? Like I said, well, I'll write it up and we'll, I'll give you an example of what, of, you know, on two and a half acre, five hundred square foot building, fifty foot setbacks, all that looks like. And that's all I got for that.
No, you can forget, all we got on the, uh. Got paper running, we have many papers. That's it, I think.
If I do have a couple more comments as far as, uh, just some updates and letting you know where we are on some things. Um, like, we had a s- a suggestion by Commissioner Walsh to add, uh, curbing. As an item for us to discuss, is it appropriate, where it's, where would it be appropriate? Do you wanna make that recommendation to make that an ordinance, uh, to council? So we'll come up with something, kinda explain what all the elements of that are, what it looks like, what it, what are the requirements? Who has to maintain it and things like that, we'll give you all of that information. And then you can make your suggestions and decide whether you wanna make that as part of one of your recommendations. When we move forward in June with some other things that we've been working on. Uh, staff is still currently working on tree preservation, uh, preferred tree lists, y'all have seen the preferred tree list, we went over that several times. Um. Commercial entryway landscaping requirements and things like that. All those are gonna be put in a packet and we look to have those next month for you guys to review. Pick at, pick apart, say no, say yes, say you hate something, you know, whatever, however you wanna change that and then. In July, we'll, we'll vote on that, whatever you guys wanna recommend on those, those aspects. Also, the study for Lander, um, February, we talked about Lander. Um, since then, you guys said that was a great idea to let them do the impact study. David and Doc have talked to Lander and it took a little, a, a, a minute for them to look and see what that looks like for them. And, you know, how is all this gonna work, you know, with the students and the faculty and who's gonna be over it? Last month in April, we had set up a meeting with one of the representatives from Lander and Doc and I, we're gonna say, okay, when are we gonna start stakeholder meetings? What does that look like, who should we start with? And unfortunately, she had a, an emergency, she had to cancel that meeting, well, we have one set up for next week. So, um, we're gonna move forward and once we have information about, you know, meetings to come, we will give you that information. Also, on the tree preservation, we're meeting with an arborist as well as the, uh, David, the administrator, he's also an arborist. And we're gonna look over those and kinda finalize those things and make sure they make sense for Edgeville County before we present them to you and we move forward to vote on them.
That, that was concerning me now, we don't wanna, we wanna turn to a Hilton Head or something. I'll say, we got, you know, we gotta thank positive for the county that we are in. And, and we look, we need to look outside the box too, it's the, we wanna stay, keep our box where our box should be. And, and, and we can get so far out of their field until we, we got more nuisance than anything else. Like trees are all that fine, but we need to take our time and look at it slow and make sure that we, you know, look at the county, what good for this county. We don't wanna be like, you know, like some other county, they got, you know, different areas and so forth. We not in the mountain, so, what I'm saying that we gotta be, you know, just like the problem with Lander, we getting something for nothing. We not gonna rock the boat, let them, you know, take, take your time and.
And just like we discussed street trees.
No, no rushing.
We really wanna get into that, where the county is responsible for maintaining that stuff and the sidewalk, if it gets busted up, because, you know.
We can't, you know.
All part of being good stewards and being good stewards, it necessarily just making everything, you know, going in and changing it, making it beautification and all. Good stewards is part of, yeah, you have to look out for the cost.
A good decision for, for, uh, for Edgeville County.
Right, cause we wanna where you got the book. In situations, in situations, you gotta put your book in your back pocket, you common sense.
Yep.
You know, confident mission, that's, that's, that's my, that's my army use, I'm, as a general, that was my policy. I tell the guys, you got your book, you know, it's your guide, but we gotta have it flexible enough that you can do a job, you gotta be flexible. That won't interfere with what the job is, isn't that right, sir? That's what you gotta have, is that where even jobs are being, if you got it right, you gonna make a mess, so we gotta be careful about that. Is it down here? Good, we, we, we'll take that, we know, we're gonna put it in the box, okay. It's time, then we'll, we'll do a job for fifteen minutes and come back to our ready meeting.
Ten-four.